But you know, if something happens.
Yeah.
Want to make... ..................................................................................................................
All right. Thank everyone for their patience. We're going to take their seats. We'll go ahead and get the meeting started. Wait, Mr. Davis is right there. We'll be... We have Ms. Divine is here as well. Thank you. All right. Check on Tamika. Okay, all right. All right, well, ma'am clerk, would you please call a roll?
Good evening, Mr. McDowell, Mr. DeVal.
Present.
Mr. Bedore, Ms. Plow, Ms. Devine, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis, you have to say yes, so we have a call on.
Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.
I'm present, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're going to have two handsome young men, young David and Yassir, come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Once you guys go on that side, go with... Go another side. And pull that microphone down and let's face the flag, and we're going to follow your lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Thank you, boys. Thank you so much. I know most of the family is new to Columbia. Welcome to Columbia. As you will learn, we love and believe in our children. So many people in this room spend a great deal of time helping mentor our kids and watching them develop. So thank you and welcome. And you have to... And after you give your word, you've got to share another word with everyone else here too, okay?
Shall we pray? Lord, your word tells us in Jeremiah 29:11, "For I know the plans that I have for you, to prosper you and not to harm you, to give you a future and a hope." We thank you, Lord, that you know us and that you have good plans for us. You have good plans for our city. It tells us that you are sovereignly directing our lives. Your word reminds us that you hear our prayers and you invite us to seek you and to know you. Lord, your plan isn't always what we thought it was going to be, but your plan is always best. And your word tells us that you work together all things for the good of those that are called according to your purpose. Lord, you see our tomorrows before they become our todays. You know the plans you have for us, and you are patiently waiting on us to come to you. So, Lord, I pray for the leaders of this city tonight, that as they make decisions, that you would guide them and lead them and just give them direction to line up with your future for this city, and we give you praise. Amen.
Amen.
I didn't know he was going to ask me to do this, but I've been here five and a half years. I serve as a senior chaplain for Columbia Police Department, but my full-time job is a pastor at Elmwood Avenue Church of God. And I am relocating to South Georgia in a couple of weeks. And so just want to thank you for the honor these last... Cry. These last five years to pray for you and pray for this city, and thank you so much.
Always inspiring, always encouraging, and I mean, you've been a wonderful stabilizing force chaplain, and we're thankful for you and wish you all the best.
I'll be here one more time, though.
I know. We've got one more time together, but we want to thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second? All right, any discussion with the previous question? Call a roll.
Mr. McDowell, Mr. DeVal.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, seeing no public input related to the agenda items as outlined, I believe,
All right.
we would ask for your approval of the February 2nd, 2016 council meeting minutes.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? Shane, under the previous question, call a roll.
Mr. McDowell, Mr. DeVal.
Aye.
Ms. Devine. Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
The consent agenda, council is asked to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 8 and 10 through 13.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second, any discussion? With the previous question, Kirk, call a roll.
Mr. McDowell.
The consent agenda here.
Mr. DeVal.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item 13A, we would ask council to approve an agreement for actuarial valuation services as requested by the Budget and Program Management Office. The award to Towers Watson in an amount not to exceed $115,000.
Second, discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk, call a roll. I'm sorry, you had... Move the previous question.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. DeVal.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Sorry, item 13B, Rare Disease Day Proclamation, the Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
Thank you. I have a proclamation on behalf of the people of Columbia. Whereas there are nearly 7,000 diseases and conditions considered rare, each affecting fewer than 200,000 Americans in the United States, according to the National Institutes of Health. And whereas each of these diseases may affect small numbers of peoples... People, rare diseases, as a group affect almost 30 million Americans. And whereas many rare diseases are serious and debilitating conditions that have a significant impact on the lives of those affected. And whereas while more than 450 drugs and biologics have been approved for the treatment of rare diseases, according to the FDA, millions of Americans still have rare diseases for which there are no approved treatments. And whereas individuals and families affected by rare disease often experience problems such as diagnosis delay, difficulty finding a medical expert, and lack of access to treatment or ancillary services. And whereas while the public is familiar with some rare diseases, many patients and families affected by less widely known rare diseases bear a large share of the burden of funding research and raising public awareness to support the search for treatments. And whereas residents of Columbia, South Carolina are among those affected by rare diseases because nearly 1 in 10 Americans has rare diseases. And whereas the National Organization for Rare Diseases, NORD, has organized a national wide observance of Rare Disease Day on February 29th, 2016. Now therefore, I, Stephen K. Benjamin, Mayor of the City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of Columbia City Council, do hereby proclaim February 29th, 2016, as Rare Disease Day in the great city of Columbia, and urge our fellow citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. Who's going to accept this tonight? Accept it?
Three minutes? I actually prepared some words to talk about why we're... Why I asked for the proclamation. Is it okay?
Yes, ma'am. Say a name for the record.
Yes, my name is Carissa Strickland, and also I have my colleague with me, Rashika Bell. First of all, on behalf of our very small committee, I'd like to say thank you for standing with us and supporting us as we try to shine a light on those in our community who are most vulnerable. Having the support of our community leaders means a lot to our initiative. In January 2013, my sister, Tia, who's here with us, was diagnosed with idiopathic pulmonary fibrosis. At first, I didn't know how to process this. I did some research, but there wasn't much to find. We only know what we don't know. We don't know what causes it. We don't know a cure. We know in most cases it's terminal, but we don't know the projected life expectancy. This was a hard pill for me to swallow. I'm usually the girl with all the answers, all the solutions. I'm the one people call for answers. So when I didn't have answers for this, I felt helpless. I witnessed my sister's health decline and her quality of life diminish, and there was nothing I could do to change it. And it was nothing I could do to fix it. Although Tia's condition is rare, her story is not. 1 in 10 Americans live with a rare disease. Millions of Americans live in daily uncertainty, not knowing what to expect, going to sleep at night, not knowing if they'll awake the next day. This is not acceptable. There are over 7,000 known rare diseases, but only 450 FDA-approved treatments. In fact, 50% of rare diseases don't have a specific foundation dedicated to research and funding. So then it's left up to patients and patient families to petition and raise awareness. This is not acceptable. Yet, this is why we're here today. We're here to start a new tradition in Columbia and to celebrate the lives of those who need our help. We welcome our city to join us in other cities around the globe and proclaiming February 29th, the last day in February, which is the rarest day of the year, as Rare Disease Day. We would also like for you to join us on Rare Disease Day at Richland Fashion Mall for the SC Fashion Truck Festival, where we'll be advocating and educating our community about rare diseases as a global and national health crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Benjamin and council, as you take your seats and before Ms. Jo Pauline Jones comes forward, I wanted to take a moment of personal privilege, if you would allow me. We've got, as you all always know, I get particularly... I'm particularly supportive of our staff. And we have one member of our staff who's sitting right beside me, so I'm surprising her with this, who's deserving of her 10-year pin with the City of Columbia. And she's certainly been pulling in, you know, her extra overload this week as she's been helping our city clerk who has the flu. But she does that every day, and it prepares her for times like these. I can't say enough about Nikki. She's a true... True member of our city hall family, and I wanted you all to share in this moment with her. Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
I don't know if that helps with all we've been putting on you this... Our next item is the update from Healthy Learners from Ms. Jo Pauline Jones, the Executive Director.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening. I just want to take an opportunity to update you all on the work that Healthy Learners is doing here in the city of Columbia. We are a statewide nonprofit organization. We're 23, almost 24 years old, but we're doing great work here in Columbia, in the Richmond School District 1 and School District 2, areas that you serve. And we're meeting the unmet health needs of children, which is why I'm here tonight. At the beginning of the council meeting, Mayor Benjamin said, when he was talking about the two young men that were going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, that we love and believe in our children. And that is the reason that I'm here before you tonight, is because I love and believe in our children, and I do see them all having potential to achieve if we are able to provide for them access to healthcare. I often begin by saying that we have a mission. Our mission is that we are devoted to removing the children's health barriers to learning. We know and understand that if a child has a toothache, they cannot perform well in school. If they cannot see the smart board or their laptop screen or the computer screen, they cannot perform well in school. These are basic needs, basic needs that many of our children go to school with every day that are not being met. We partner with the school districts and particularly the school nurses. So when they identify a child that has unmet health needs, they will refer those children to us. We raise the dollars that we use so that parents do not have to take off from work. Oftentimes, what we find is that many of the parents of the children that are referred to us are parents who are working in minimum wage positions that don't allow for paid time off. And when that happens, a child may go to school with these unmet health needs, not because the parent does not care or does not want that child to be healthy, but because they need to work to continue to meet their basic needs. And so here in the city of Columbia, the Midlands program of Healthy Learners serves 72 schools. Last year alone, we served 580 students, and we provided over 1,300 healthcare services. The reason that the services outnumber the number of children is because oftentimes, on average, for every child, they need three services. So it's not necessarily just a pair of glasses or just a toothache that needs to be taken care of. Oftentimes, it's medications or other medical services that we try to provide for the children to remove that barrier so that they can perform their best in the classroom. I often share with individuals that we're working with children here in the Midlands, right here in the city of Columbia. And dental care, vision care, and medications are the three main services that we're providing for the children right here in the city of Columbia. So I'm here tonight to appeal to you as city council to join us in our efforts to support children who have unmet health needs and to help us as a nonprofit organization to raise the dollars that we need to. In order to serve that 580 children, perhaps there are more that will be referred to us this year, and with your help, we'll continue to be available to meet those needs.
Awesome. Thank you, Jo.
You're welcome.
How much more money do you have to raise?
We start out at zero at the beginning of January, so we're right at the beginning of the year. Our budget this year is $1.4 million, and we've been successful in doing that over the last 23 years. We intend to do it again this year. But it's always beneficial for a nonprofit to identify other partners so that we can leverage the dollars that are outside of this state and outside of this community to help us meet the needs.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We became aware of the mission, I think, last year, maybe a little bit after the community promotions funding process, Mr. Mayor. And Ms. Pauline Jones, she said she just wanted to be able to share their mission with you all ahead of that potential funding stream or NOFA that would come out potentially during... If you all authorize that during the budgetary process. So I think she just wanted you all to be aware of what they do. And I'm so happy it was on a Tuesday night when her fabulous Christian is playing basketball at Cardinal Newman.
He's getting ready for playoffs this Saturday. Thank you so much for making this possible for us, because it's like we are a well-kept secret right here in the city of Columbia. And I need all of you all to help us spread the word, because there are children who are going to school unhealthy every day.
It's going to take a very comprehensive and community-wide approach to meet those needs. And we appreciate your leadership for many years in this space and others, Jo. And I'm talking to staff. I mentioned some members of council as well. Met with the county director of DSS about helping them meet the needs of trying to place 165 foster care students as well and also working with them on some other intermediate care options. There's so much work that needs to be done, and we do, as a city, need to be in the vanguard of establishing some really strong public-private partnerships, so...
Absolutely.
Thank you. Look forward to talking some more about it as the budget process continues.
Thank you so much. You all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the zoning ordinance rewrite assessment and recommendations from Ms. Krista Hampton, the Director of Planning and Development Services. I'm sure she has the consulting team with her as well.
I do, thank you. I'm going to introduce this presentation first by saying thank you. Thank you to city council and to administration for making this possible in the first place. It's something that I've wanted to do for a long time. And you know you're in the right job when you say, "I am so excited. We are rewriting our zoning ordinance." So, but what also is exciting about it is that we're not just creating a tool out of thin air. We are doing this based on a community vision that you adopted last year, Plan Columbia. And so the zoning ordinance is the tool to achieve that vision. So these just aren't rules and regulations. This is what we use to become the Columbia that we have envisioned us to be. So it's really exciting. And we have a terrific team working on our behalf with Clarion. And Craig Richardson will be speaking with you tonight, and he is accompanied by Pete Sullivan. So I will go ahead and turn it over to them.
Great. Thank you, Krista. Good evening, council mayor, Chris, mayor. I'm Craig Richardson, the director of Clarion Associates. We're working with Krista and your staff, definitely your fellow members. It's a real pleasure meeting you. And what I would like to talk to you about is this document, which we've just completed. We actually met with your planning commission at noon today. You have a zoning advisory committee. We're meeting with them tomorrow, and we're having a community meeting tomorrow night in addition to the presentation and meeting we're having with you today. What I would like to do is just take a few minutes and sort of highlight for you where we are in the process. Updating a zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance is something you do about every 30 or 40 years. So this is a big undertaking. It's going to take about a year, year and a half to do. I'd like to just give you a quick overview of where we are. And then overview for you, this assessment document. The assessment document itself, and I want to mention this first, we feel is very important. It's taking that vision that was created in the Landes Plan that you adopted last year and it's sort of putting even more flesh on the bones by basically identifying the key policy direction in that document or in that plan and how we would implement it, how we would achieve that vision in your updated zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. In terms of the process itself, though, as I said, it's about a year, year and a half long process. And we're about a third of the way through it. We started about six months ago with project initiation, and we had a number of community meetings. We got input from a lot of a number of stakeholders in the community. We met with some of you, got your comments. We met with the planning commission, met with an advisory committee, and then a number of stakeholders. Actually conducted some one-on-one interviews. And we... There was a questionnaire that we put on the website. There is a... We were using a website for the project and got about 80 responses. And collectively, we got a lot of input about what was important in terms to the community in terms of the changes that needed to be made in your development regulations. That's in this document. That's what this document does, is synthesize that input. And then we include recommendations on how those... That input will be accomplished in the update. Once we go through this process, and we'd love to get any comments you had either tonight or in the near future, we are then going to go to the next step, which is drafting the development regulations. And we'll use this as a roadmap. That'll take about eight or nine months to a year. And we'll be coming back to you as we go through the drafting process to get your input. We're not going to draft the whole document at one time. We're going to do it in increments, in three different increments. So that's the process, and our goal is to try to complete this by the end of the year. With respect to the actual ordinance assessment and the community input that we received, there really were four, what we consider to be four key themes or goals that were identified by the community that needed to be addressed in this update. First was, we needed to take your current regulations and make them a lot more user-friendly. And that's number one. That's number one. There are three major recommendations that we've made on that issue. Second was, we needed to implement Plan Columbia, the plan that was adopted last year, and there are two major recommendations that we have with respect to that goal. Third was that we needed to modernize your regulations to and focus them more to encourage redevelopment and infill. Columbia is a built-out community, and from our perspective, and we've updated, my firm has updated about 150 development codes across the country. We look at the Columbia code as a redevelopment code, because most of the properties in the city are going to be, have already been built on. And finally, there was a very, very strong emphasis, especially in the community meetings, placed on the need to support and encourage green building practices in the community. And so that is the fourth theme that we've identified in the update. With respect to these four themes, with respect to the first theme of creating a user-friendly code, there were three key recommendations we made. Number one, the document needs to be reorganized more logically and more intuitively. Basically, what we are suggesting, and on the slide that I have that you see here, we're suggesting it be reorganized into nine chapters, but the reorganization is really going to focus around three key concepts. Number one, all the review procedures need to be consolidated and put into one article, and there needs to be a set of standard review procedures. Number two, with respect to the user-friendliness issue, there are, there has been incredible advances in software technology in the last five to seven years. Your code right now doesn't take advantage of any of those, so we're proposing to do that, and we do that by adding a lot of graphics, three-dimensional drawings, photographs, tables, flow charts to make, to communicate zoning concepts graphically instead of in, you know, we're big believers in the idea of a picture's worth a thousand words, and where we can, where we can communicate a zoning concept graphically, that's the direction we're going to move in. Finally, the third key recommendation for user-friendliness is, we need to look at your existing development review processes, and we need to streamline them and consolidate them where it makes sense to do so. And there were a number of places in your current regulations we found where that could happen, and so I'm not going to get into any details on that issue, but we're recommending that type of consolidation. With respect to implementing Plan Columbia, there are two key recommendations. And before sort of talking about the recommendations, let me mention sort of the key policy direction, the key building blocks that came out of that plan in terms of where you want to be, where the community wants to be 20 years from now, 10 years from now. There were about five or six key development principles. Number one, you've got great neighborhoods, and you want to maintain the strength of those neighborhoods, and you want to protect their character. That's number one. Number two was, you want to support development in the city center. Support it, encourage it in the right way. Thirdly, you want to support infill and redevelopment of parcels in ways that are consistent with desired character and the context where they are located. Fourth, you want to provide opportunities for multiple housing choices, because there are going to be demands for a lot of different types of housing choices moving forward. Fourth, you generally want to improve development quality. Fifth, you want to create more walkability and connections in appropriate locations, and then you want to support green building practices. That's in your vision document. With respect to the recommendations in implementing that, we had two big recommendations. Some restructuring of your zoning districts, and that's outlined in the document, and the second is modernization and refinement of your development standards. What I mean by development standards, parking requirements, landscaping requirements, and that sort of thing. One other thing I would like to mention, and this goes back to the user-friendliness issue, if you take a look at this slide that I'm using, and this will give you a picture of the direction we're moving in with respect to your zoning districts. This is an example of the type of layout that we would use for a zoning district. As you can see, what we've done is we can consolidate, we feel like we can consolidate your existing zoning districts, which are nothing but text and multiple pages, into a couple of pages, two or three. Purpose statements on the top left side, the intensity and dimensional standards in a table below that, three-dimensional drawings to show the desired character on the left side along with the purpose statement, and then on the right side, you'll see another three-dimensional drawings that shows the application of the actual development standards. That's a zoning district. That's sort of the layout and the direction we're moving in. As you can see, it's going to be much more graphic. It's going to be, I think, communicate, you know, what the desired development is in a district. Finally, we're going back to the development standards. There are two or three key concepts that I want to highlight, and we're not only going to modernize these standards, but another thing we're going to do is, we are going to move away from the principle in your current zoning ordinance development standards that one-size-fits-all. In other words, we think one of the big obstacles for redevelopment in Columbia today is you've got one-size-fits-all standards, and a lot of them are very suburban, and you've got a built context that you need to develop in. So what we're proposing is, with your parking standards, with your landscaping standards, with your other standards, that we will, we will develop standards for a more built context and a more suburban context, or if there's another important context for that. So in other words, it's not going to be, it's not going to be one-size-fits-all. It's going to be, we're going to, we're going to look at the context and develop the standards around the context. Another thing we're suggesting is the development of something called neighborhood compatibility standards. These will protect your neighborhoods from adjacent commercial, higher, very high-intensity multifamily development. In other words, to ensure there is a smooth transition that occurs. This is being done in communities across the country that want to, that understand they're going to have to allow for, you know, higher densities along commercial corridors or other locations that are close to existing neighborhoods, but if you're going to do that, you're going to have to do that in a way that is compatible. So we're proposing to develop standards for that. We're also proposing, we're also recommending that we look at more closely your tree protection standards, considering you've got a beautiful tree canopy in Columbia, and strengthening those standards. Finally, two other themes that I want to quickly mention. The third one is to add context-sensitive regulations to promote infill development. Infill is a big issue here. We're going to do that through these context-sensitive standards for parking and landscaping. In other words, deal with your different context. We're going to also, in targeted areas in the community, apply something called a contextual compatibility standard. In other words, that is a standard which would ensure that, would remove not deformities for structures and for uses, but would, as long as development is consistent with the character in that area. We're also suggesting a minor adjustment provision that would be handled administratively if somebody wants to make, if there's a problem, a one-foot problem with a setback, that would be handled administratively, subject to standards, and then, and then we're also suggesting some additional flexibility provisions. Finally, we are also making recommendations for incorporating green building practices. This would really be more of, do two things. Number one is, it would provide some incentives, and number two, it would, it would make it clear that certain types of green building practices, like someone who wants to put in an alternative energy facility, or someone that wants to put in a community garden or do other forms of agriculture, we will identify specifically where those uses are allowed, make it very clear in the ordinance. Someone that wants to build a lead building, one of the things we're recommending is possibly providing some incentives for that type of development. So in a nutshell, those are the, those are the key themes, those are the, sort of the key recommendations in the report. At the end of the document, there's an annotated outline, and that annotated outline is, it's about 25 pages, 30 pages. It would be an outline of the new code if the recommendations in the report are followed through with. With that said, I'll, any questions, any comments?
Mr. Duval.
I would just like to commend you on this document. It's one of the best I've read on planning, and I've read a lot of them in 40 years, so I think you've done a great job, and I can't wait to see this implemented. I think it'll take care of a lot of problems we've had. I told Krista, shared with her, an email I had from a friend who very rarely has good things to say about what we're doing here in the city, is a constant emailer, but he was very encouraging, having read this. He'd read all 186 pages of it, and he was very encouraged by what was in the document, and said we were moving in the right direction. So I compliment you.
Well, thank you very much, and we're excited. Columbia, you have great assets in this community, and we think with a revised code, we can build on the assets that you have.
Mr. Davis.
I'm still kind of going through it. One of the themes I like about it, you know, if they, they hold true in terms of the approach, and that is that we're going to get away from the one-size-fits-all, number one, and so in my mind, that would also mean that we can allow, through working with communities and neighborhoods, allow them to sustain and maybe create their own character, because those are the things that make neighborhoods unique, and that as a result of that, I think we can encourage and find a shorter, easier, helpful way to help with redevelopment. Part of redevelopment is also bringing neighborhoods or community back, you know, from where it was, so I'm looking forward to that, and I'm hoping that that's, you know, the theme is throughout this, and I'm sure that when we continue to dialogue with the public, you'll probably hear some of that. That's going to be a theme out there. Of course, every neighborhood has a different way of saying that, and I'm hoping that we use this tool and we listen to it.
And we agree wholeheartedly with your comment. I didn't, there are many recommendations in the report, and I talked about the one-size-fits-all issue, but we actually do have a specific recommendation or tool recommended to deal with a neighborhood who wants very, very tailored regulations for their neighborhood, to remove obstacles and encourage redevelopment and protect character.
Maybe in a separate document or procedure, or proceeding, rather, but do we talk at all about undergrounding utilities in this?
I'm sorry.
Undergrounding utilities.
We did not, I think there was one place we mentioned underground utilities, but that would, that certainly is a standard that will be addressed in the, in the regulations in terms of either requiring them in certain locations or requiring them generally. And there are, there are definitely communities in South Carolina where we've updated the code that are doing that.
Okay. Ms. Duval?
Just a question, and I've sent this to staff to look into it. I've been getting a lot recently about edible landscaping, and I know other cities are doing that more. I'm just thinking, being forward-thinking, is that anything that should be included in this kind of document, or is that more of a?
No, we can include it if you, if you want to move in that direction. We have a section where we talked about green building practices and sustainable development. So we did talk, I think, generally about zearscape, but not edible landscaping, but we, that's the kind of comments we like to hear. If that's something you want us to look at, we would definitely do it.
Yeah. I mean, I'm very new to it. I'm reading everything I can, but everything I've read, it just seems like that's definitely a direction I think we'd want to go in.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Any other input?
All right. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. If there are any other comment, additional comments that you have about the document, any specific input, we'd like to get it.
I think the continued public engagement is key, so what our citizens tell you, let's make sure we take it all into account as we continue this process. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will have our normal, well, we're gonna, I'm saying normal, I think we're going to move into probably every other month timeframe where we bring the flood recovery update to you all. So for the October 2015 historic flood recovery update, this evening, Ms. Keely Thibodeau is with us, the principal for Landmark Consulting, our consultants through this recovery process, and Keely and Ms. C. are available, as well as myself, to answer your questions after her presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Landmark Consulting is the Columbia Flood Recovery Program Manager, and I'm going to talk to you today about the types of, various types of resources, federal resources, funding that are going to be underneath this program. So, how do I do that? This? Okay. Okay, there we go. So the primary source of funding in the program is the FEMA Public Assistance Program, which we've, we have discussed before, but the mission of the program is really to provide assistance to local governments and certain types of private nonprofit organizations so that you can respond and recover from major disasters. This particular program is really just a government-to-government program. This does not provide for individual assistance. This particular program does not provide for individual assistance. The cost share, of course, is the 75-25 split, and it's the largest portion of this flood recovery program. So this funding specifically addresses the damaged property that the city owned at the time of the flood event. So we'll talk about some of the other programs that address other parts of the recovery, but this is the main one. The FEMA 406 Hazard Mitigation Program, this is mitigation that's related to elements directly damaged by the disaster. So any city-owned facilities that incurred damage can use these funds to better improve or make more resilient the property that you currently own. So different measures are designed and identified and written into each individual project worksheet grant, which is the vehicle for which FEMA funds these projects, and benefit cost analysis is also determines eligibility for use of this particular program. And again, this one is not for individual assistance, but again, for damaged city facilities. The NRCS waterway debris removal is another program that we expect to use to clear debris from some of the existing waterways here, and it has a 25% cost share. There will be some, we, the FEMA PA funding is supplemental to the NRCS funding, so whatever they don't cover, then we'll apply for grant funds from FEMA for this area. CD, go ahead.
Have we applied for the NRCS funds to clear some of the waterways?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Have we got any?
This is to Mr. Duval, and you've heard us give reports before about, you know, we were discussing with the state and the county, the limited amount that was there, but we have been trying to tap into that resource, but it's not a lot.
Right, exactly. The CDBG disaster recovery funds is a, is separate from the regular CDBG dollars that you will receive every year. So far, the city has requested a direct allocation from HUD, but the notice of allocation has not been completed yet by HUD, but once that notification is given, then we'll have 90 days from its published date to submit an application. So this is funding that we're anticipating being added to the program at a later date, and this funding will cover unmet needs for long-term recovery. at a later date. And this funding will cover unmet needs for long-term recovery, including some housing needs. It could potentially be used for housing, economic development, and other infrastructure projects. But they must be disaster-related.
Let me ask, with the CDBG disaster recovery, is that, like, when that notice comes out, is it only available to certain areas like, like South Carolina that was hit? Or would it be open to any other person who's had some kind of disaster?
It's, it's disaster-specific. So there would be an allocation just for, for South Carolina, yeah.
And I think the way it was written, also, it was about the, the hurricanes themselves or the storms. So Joaquin and-
The Joaquin and the other storm. But I think what that means specifically would be South Carolina, Texas, Oklahoma, and, is Missouri, is Missouri. But that, but the wording is, is, is very specific. It speaks to Joaquin, I can't remember the storm. I can't remember the storm's name.
I brought it with me earlier when-
Yeah. Smeeke, you were at a work session, but we did get communication from HUD today that they still have not made a decision. They wrote, they did write us a note, they have not made a decision yet on exactly what they're, we're gonna do in that space, so.
So some of the other program funding is gonna be the 404 Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And this is a program that's administered by the state. The state will prioritize and select projects that are cost-effective and reduce repetitive losses. This is to really help you mitigate future storms, but it does not have to be related to damaged city property, currently damaged city property. So at this point, the state has about $36 million to be spent for property acquisition, dams, and planning. And local governments will basically have to compete for funding. And there is an application process. The pre-application for this particular source is for April 5th. And then the final application is due to the state on September 1st.
Keely, and this may be more of a question for Teresa, actually. When is the most appropriate time to articulate the same thing we talked about at work session to you all, that we are interested in these hazard mitigation grant funds or whatever other funds for potential property acquisition purposes? And just affirmatively state that, because I think that's been a, a kind of a question out there as to what our intentions and commitment are. And I think council is unanimous that, obviously, we know there are a number of needs, there are a number of moving parts, and, and what role the state will play in, in local match and everything else. But making it clear that that is the direction we want to go in. Is that time now? Is that something that you guys need to come back to us so we can affirmatively state, so at least our citizens know that as soon as, and also getting some clarity, I think Howard raised it earlier, as to what funds that if we decided to move forward in property acquisition, what funds are clearly reimbursable somewhere down the road? Because I think we, we, we're getting, obviously, a number of moving parts. But if they're clearly reimbursable and we have the ability and resources to act now, I think there's a, a strong interest in acting now and, and not later. Is that fair?
Well, I think, Mayor, probably part of the reason that Keely's going through these various program fundings is because it's almost like a puzzle that we're waiting to try to piece together. And while we certainly would take your direction right now, if that is in fact the way that you would want to see us submit our pre-application to the state when it comes to the hazard mitigation, the 404 funds, then we can certainly, you know, take that direction from you now and move, and move in that regard. I think what the staff and I continue to have concern about, and I've had this discussion with you, is the overall, you know, emphasis for this city on how we're going to recover internally, as well as doing everything we can to help citizens of Columbia. So some of the, I guess, strategy without knowing how the state is going to, and there's been a pie chart that's been shared, how they're gonna divvy up $36 million statewide. And there's categories, whether it's buy-out of property or other fa, other things that they're going to put the money towards. You know, are we being strategic in, in going, applying for all bout, buy-out of property and not submitting our pre-app that would help address the canal, for instance, or a roadway to the Metro Waste Water Treatment Plant? So I think certainly, yes, we, we want that kind of direction. We want you to have all the information, though, too, on, you know, if we need to also apply for some things that are internal to the city, or what maybe some of these other program funding mechanisms to include CDBG, BGDR, if we get notification of those funds, maybe we would have a better way to put that puzzle together for you and say, okay, for hazard mitigation, 404, you all want to dedicate that to the buy-out of property for CDBGDR, which we don't know if we've gotten it yet. Maybe we can use that for another purpose that's internal to the city. I would hate for you all to, I guess, make a decision that's not holistic.
Commit to a course of action without all the information first.
Right. And I think we wanted to try to give you that and definitely include the buy-out.
I think you have a strong, a strong sense of, of the body. And obviously, the, the larger, separate discussion, but certainly a bit more, more macro, is if we do aggressively pursue property acquisition, the places that have done it well have not done it in a piecemeal approach. I mean, so you don't, you don't want the kind of toothless approach, you know?
Yes.
Property, property, you know, lot, lot, property, property. Since if you use these funds, they, I assume they have to be in the public realm, public domain in perpetuity. So, I mean, a very comprehensive look at it. But I, I think it's fair to say, I haven't talked to Ms. Plow or Mr. Medura, but at least the five of us who are assembled here, that we have a very strong interest in going in that direction as, you know, as, as quickly as possible, as soon as we have the resources. Just want to kind of get that on, on the record.
I think it's important, too, and you've started those discussions with the county, for example. I mean, we all need to be working together and complementing what each other is doing. And I know that the Hazard Mitigation Program is, the monies, from what we've been told, Keely, correct me if I'm wrong, they go to the counties. But because the city has, you know, from the very beginning of this, had our own major impact here, I think we've been approved to also apply for hazard mitigation funding as a city. And so with that said, we still need to be collaborating with the county, because as you said, you know, there's no need to buy out property that's in the city and is right on the county line. And they're not doing that. So it's just a lot of moving parts. And I think we just need to make sure we're coordinating well with our neighboring entities.
And last thing, the reason I ask that is because most of the, of the news reports continue to state that we, we haven't committed yet to going in, in that direction. And I think we feel-
And I don't, you know, I think-
Not that you-
Right. I don't know that anyone has totally committed until those pre-apps are put in. And I think, again, it's so important for us to be communicating about that. Because, you know, the property owners also, what they want to do, every property owner doesn't want to sell their property. Some do, some don't. And the other hurricane was Patricia. I just found it on-
Patricia, Patricia.
Patricia.
My question was along those lines of the buying out. Since this is competitive funding, is there anything, and I got Missy's list yesterday, and that was very good, very comprehensive. But is there anything that we could be doing strategically to position ourselves so that we can make the case as we compete for, if we decide that our money would go for buy, buyouts or whatever, make the case that, I mean, everybody was hit hard. I understand that. But advocating for our properties and, and the effect that it's been on them versus someone else?
Yes, that, all of that will be part of the application process. We all have to run a cost-benefit analysis and provide other data in order to make a compelling argument for that. But absolutely.
Is there anything we should be doing now, though, getting ready for when that gets more finalized?
Well, I think the best thing that we can do right now is that the state's actually put their funding priorities and methodology is kind of, is out online right now. And they're receiving comment on that. And those comments are due back, I think, by the end of the month. And that can be done on, online if there's any comments on the existing plan. And the existing plan does describe the, I guess, percentage of funding that they'd like to use for housing and for this particular purpose. But the rest of the requirements have not been presented yet to find out exactly how they're going to, I guess, evaluate proposals. And so, once we get that selection criteria, then we can tailor our projects to, to highlight what, you know, what will give us the best, the best result.
Great, thank you.
Lee, is that also the time where, to Mr. Duval's point earlier about the, the length of time this is taking? Or is that really already just set in stone from the state's perspective? You know, the pre-app is due in-
Yeah. So the, so the deadlines for this particular program have been, have been set. So the, the pre-application is due April 5th. And then their final application is due September 1st. And then the state is planning to submit all of that to FEMA in October. So we're not expecting any, any decisions or any funding or until, you know, the fourth quarter of this year. So this is not an immediate source. So this is not an immediate source. Any other questions about that? No? So there's also a, a five-year hazard mitigation plan, which is done in conjunction with regional planning for, what is it, regional planning for hazard mitigation that occurs within a five-year cycle. Local governments will prepare action plans. They're monitored and evaluated by the Richland County, County EMD and the Central Midlands Council of Governments. And the city staff has met with COG in preparation for this update. So that, that will also be coming along. And then the Community Disaster Loan is also another program that's gonna be coming available pretty soon. The state has reached out to gauge interest. So there'll be some initial meetings describing this particular program within the next month or two. And this is basically, community disaster loans that are just geared towards local government, that have a need for financial assistance to perform government functions. And they have to demonstrate a substantial tax loss in order to be eligible for this program. But the loans are not to exceed 25% of the annual operating budget for 2015, the year in which you had your, your disaster. And it's up to $5 million.
The typical terms on that loan?
The, the typical terms are extremely favorable. I don't know exactly what they are at this point, but most, most governments can't get anything better than what's being offered in this kind of one-time opportunity here. So we will get more information about the requirements when that initial meeting is held.
And when you say tax, that's not just property tax, would that include H-tax and-
Well, the, the guidance just says tax loss. So I'm not, I don't have the exact definition for that, but I can follow up. So the, the program lifecycle, so the emergency period was really from October to December of last year. And we focused on the emergency response and debris removal. Right now, we're moving into the program execution phase. And this will be a three-to-five-year phase of grants management, compliance, and, and project delivery, the longest of which is the Canal Project, of course. And then lastly is the closeout phase, which is formal grant closure. And that, that also can take a little bit of time. But looking ahead, our program status reports will include our scheduled milestones. And financials will be provided beginning in March. So we'll be reporting more project-specific information going forward. And we have had working sessions on project priorities with city staff and conducting site visits with FEMA and gathering documentation to submit to state to, to make our best claim. And then we've been identifying requirements by source, funding source, that is, to maximize use of each one and maintain compliance with each. So. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keely. At this time, we'd also ask, as part of a related item to the flood recovery, Mr. Paul Featheringill, the Business Loan Officer, for the Office of Business Opportunities to come forward to give the overview on the Small Business Disaster Recovery Program.
Thank you. Good evening. I am here this evening to give you an update on our Small Business Disaster Relief Fund, our Small Business Disaster Recovery Loan Program. You know, as we all know, when we reflect back on the flooding that happened in October, there were so many different people, so many different parts of our community that were impacted, including our small business community. And, you know, we have seen through assistance from FEMA, through assistance from SBA, from the Small Business Administration, there has been a lot of aid that's come into the business community from that. If you look, and I have numbers through early January, but FEMA has approved more than $16 million in business loans in the state. And then also, when you look at the Small Business Administration, which has been another resource that a lot of businesses have turned to, they've done over 130 disaster loans for businesses in, in Richland County. For that number, it's for the county as a whole totaling over $7 million. So there has been assistance that's been coming in from FEMA, from SBA, but there still is a tremendous need there. There are businesses who have not been able to get funding through those resources. There are others who are still in the process of going through the, the approval and appeal process. But there's really a significant need there. So to kind of help with that, we have launched the Small Business Disaster Recovery Program to assist businesses in recovering from flood losses, flood damage, and assisting with their disaster recovery efforts. To be eligible for this, a business has to be located in the city of Columbia. You have to have applied with FEMA for disaster assistance and have disaster losses not covered by any other insurance. So we're, really, we're looking to come in there and help if you have sought out some of these other resources, but they still, they haven't been able to get you back to where you need to be. We're looking for businesses in general that have been in business for a minimum of two years. And that's because we're looking to see if businesses are really, really sustainable. We're looking for businesses that have fewer than 20 employees. We are looking at, at setting aside a part of the fund, potentially about 10% for nonprofits, because we know there are a number of nonprofits in our community with needs as well. And then, you know, we've looked at a couple of different locations. I know that the Lake Catherine area, the Owens Field area, these are all significantly impacted areas within our community. So we're also gonna look at the areas that businesses are coming from and give priority to some of the more heavily impacted areas. And we are kind of in keeping with our underwriting criteria for our existing loan program. We are gonna look at, at credit and the tax return and that sort of thing. But we are, I will say, in, in response to that, we are gonna collect some financial information on these businesses, but we are certainly looking to make it a much more streamlined process than what our typical loan process is, recognizing the, the degree of need and, and how quickly we'd like to get that out. As far as ineligible applicants, we aren't making this available to franchises. We're also not gonna make it available to real estate ventures. So in other words, if you wanted to come in and buy a building that was damaged by the flood, excuse me, rehab it and then sell it to somebody else, we're not gonna make the funding available for that. We're really looking for, to help businesses that have been impacted by this directly. Eligible uses, you can use it for working capital, inventory, equipment, payroll, cleanup and repair. You know, there's a lot of different things that happened. In addition to structural damage that came from the flood, there was also the fact that so many businesses were closed for a period of time because of boil water, because there were roads that were closed. And all of these things lead to loss of revenue, loss of working capital, inability to meet payroll. So these are the kinds of things that we want to help them address. As I mentioned, the underwriting criteria that we're gonna use are gonna be sort of similar, but a little bit more streamlined to what we have on our loan program right now. All we're really gonna ask for, we have an application, we're gonna ask them for one year of tax returns, just one year, so we can see where they were at. And then we're also gonna, through our loan committee, we're gonna look at the, the ability of the business to recover and also to repay the loan as kind of, of determining factors. Sources of funding, it is CDBG funds that we're using. We have $100,000 available to lend. And what that comes from is, those were funds that we had originally allocated last year to go towards a contractor financing program that we were looking at rolling out. And I think we might have come and, and given at least a little bit of a, of discussion of that earlier. But then when, when, when the flooding happened, we decided to look at reallocating those funds toward, toward this. Businesses are eligible for loans of up to $10,000. There is a three-month deferment, and then it's a one-year repayment, or I mean, I'm sorry, a two-year repayment. And it's a 0% interest. So it is a loan, but there's no interest on it. We are gonna require personal guarantees from the borrowers- We are going to require personal guarantees from the borrowers. In some cases, we may require some additional collateral, depending on the circumstances of the borrower. Just to give you an example, if someone borrowed $5,000, they'd have a deferment and then a monthly payment of about $200 for two years. So, that's just to kind of give you an idea of what they would be looking at. The, the application process, we're asking for an application form, $25 application fee, a copy of the business license, and a, and a one-years, one year of tax returns. We opened this up on January 28th. We're actually looking at, at taking applications through, through tomorrow, technically. We're going to review the applications through our CRLF committee later in the month, and then we're going to disperse the funds by the end of March. Does anybody have any questions?
Paul, do you know how many applications you've received?
We, we've received two completed applications. We have several others that are in process that I'm expecting to get over the next day or so.
Let's, let's continue to aggressively let people know this is available. I know you're already working on that, but, all right.
So, is, is tomorrow the cutoff? Will we not accept any more after tomorrow?
As of right now, it is, yes.
Can we extend it?
Possibly.
Because based on your applications, how many did you say yet?
We've gotten two completed ones, but we've got several others that I, that I'm planning to get in.
And then get max 10,000, and you have 100,000 available.
Right.
And the maximum amount, did I hear you say 10,000?
Yes, sir.
That leaves 80,000 available.
Excuse me?
I said, that leaves 80,000 available if those two get the max, so it seems, makes sense to extend it.
And I am expecting to get several more applications tomorrow, but we'll see.
Paul, you said you're concentrating on the areas that, that could be classified as hard as hit, or...
Sure.
What do you, what do you think accounts for the small number of applications up to this point?
I, I think part of it is that it's a loan, and I think, you know, even though it's an interest-free loan with, with some pretty, you know, a deferment period and a pretty good term, I think there is some reluctance out there on the part of some people to take an additional loan, especially those who, you know, maybe have already gotten some or maybe already be struggling to, to, to meet some of what they already have. So, I think that's part of it. But I do think it's, I have noticed as we've been publicizing it more and more...
More inquiries?
Yeah, it's been picking up a lot over the last, the last several days.
And I just wanted to add, with respect to extension, we'll probably reopen. What we don't want to do is hold up the people who have applied now, so we're going to go ahead, close it tomorrow, send it to our committee, and based on the funds available, reopen it for another month. But we didn't want to hold, and it's CDBG dollars, we didn't want to hold up the people who have applied already, waiting on folks to come in. So, based on the funds available, we will reopen it to spend it.
So, once those two applications are processed, we start over again? Is there, is there a second startup date?
We, it, we will not determine it until we meet with the CRLF committee, when they review the applications that we get in, by, by tomorrow, and then we'll make a determination.
You may have said, Paul, how many more potentials do you have in the pipeline?
Oh, um, at least five or six, based on who I've talked with. Now, will they all get in? I think so. I can't guarantee that.
You seeing, are you seeing any trends in types of businesses?
Um, that we've had, we've had a few different restaurants. They seem to be particularly impacted. I think a lot of it with them was, was loss of customers for various reasons, just not being able to get out. And retail businesses, kind of the same thing. People who had drop-offs and, and customers being able to come to them for various reasons and are trying to get back on their feet.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Tina.
Thank you, Tina. Item 17, council's asked to approve the contract amendment number two for an update to the Water and Sewer Rate Study as requested by the Utilities and Engineering Department, award to Black and Beach Corporation in the amount of $115,000.
The, I know, Regina, Ms. Williams, did you, I know you said you missed it in the, early in the agenda, did you want to speak to this item on the agenda?
I want to speak to the Water and Sewer.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll take that, okay, okay, we can take that a little later on, but, we have any other, let's, is there a motion on this item?
Question.
Discussion, Mr. Duval?
Will the rate study take in consideration the damages caused by the flood?
Yes, sir, we will. We're, I mean, the discussions are ongoing with the staff and our consultants and the rate study. I mean, this is an amendment to our current, current contract, so we already, you know, work with Black and Beach.
Were they given any parameters on rate hikes? Did you say, we're not going over X?
No, I do think, though, that because they were involved with last year's, or helped do or did last year's rate study, and were involved with the discussions that surrounded it, I think they're pretty clear on the range that is probably tolerable. I guess that's the best way for me to say it at this point, but I do think that we've got to have some flexibility as we are still, things are very fluid as far as our damages are concerned at this point.
Can I, I'd just add, I would say, Howard, the way that Black and Beach normally does it, though, it, although they have a, a recommendation, normally it's very, it's a very objective study. The last two times have been pretty much, this is where you are, this is what, based on what you need, this is where things go, so, and it always leaves it up to us. So, even though they kind of present it, it's, it would be ultimately our decision, but they give several options for us to consider.
Now, we don't have a particularly long agenda tonight, but I know we don't want to keep you out here all night either. Mr. Pastor, I don't want to have to answer Mrs. Graham either, so, if you want to speak at this point in the agenda, that'd be fine.
If you want to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, we want to get in, act on this matter first. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second, all right, so we'll take this up. The previous question, Carl Carrow?
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Regina, just, just in the interest of getting y'all out of here, I don't want to keep you here all evening, if you want to go ahead and speak. Yeah, please, please.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
As our neighborhood is coming forward, I want to say, the young lady who came up about the healthy learners, please help them. Every day, we see students getting help, getting glasses, getting dental, and people who wouldn't be able to afford it, and it is a phenomenal program. So, we would appreciate any, as, as a teacher, we would appreciate any help you can give them. We're here tonight, I looked on the agenda and saw where you were going to be discussing several issues regarding water and sewer, and we're here to bring to your attention, we've brought it to the attention of the city before regarding the water in the Booker Washington Heights neighborhood. If you look at the screen, that is a house filter that's changed about every six weeks, and that filter was pure white, and this is how the filter looks now, as of a few days ago. This particular house, my house, has PVC pipes from the end of the property line into the house, so our pipes are, are clear. This is coming from the infrastructure of our street. We've had it flushed before, all of these things, and this is how it continues to look. We have another, another picture, which is a house, and I will let...
No, I don't need to speak.
Okay? This house, this house, the same thing applies, they always push me forward, the same thing applies with the house, and as a matter of fact, there were two pictures, but we also have a picture where the, where the actual clothing is rusted. The pipes, the water company has come out, the city of Columbia has come out to this particular property. They've taken the water, the, off of the line, detached it from the meter, let the water flush, and come back, and a statement was even made that it's, it's amazing that, that the clothes are not rusted, and the clothes are not red. And sure enough, within the next washing, that's what, that's what occurred. We don't know what these contaminants are that's coming through in our neighborhood. There's another part to the neighborhood that I want to speak to, and I'm, I'll let my pastor speak to that part, but on my talk show a few weeks ago, I had someone on there from the CDC. We're very concerned with the Flint, Michigan issue, Flint, Michigan issue. We don't know if there's lead in here, we don't know if it's rust, we don't know if it's lead coming from the old pipes in an old infrastructure, and we have a serious infrastructure problem. We want to remain at the forefront of your minds as you consider things that are going on in the city with water and sewer, and know that we need our infrastructure fixed sooner than later. My pastor can speak to some things that are also occurring at our church and then at another church.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, again, we have similar problems at St. John Baptist Church. We've always had rust, rusty water coming through, and the city would come through, I guess, once a month and flush the fire hydrant so that our water could clear up, but it seems to have been progressively worse. So, want to share that with you. Also, with our baptismal pool, we had several pictures that we sent down to the city with the sediment. After we've drained the pool, it's just been all over the pool, rusty sediment over the pool. Thank you. Yes, and of course, we have a preschool of about 90 children that's there every day, Monday through Friday, and of course, our, many of our parishioners come through during the week, and we have several activities during the week.
In addition to St. John, we have Bible Way on Piedmont that is having this problem also, and the concern also is for the restaurants. There are restaurants in the area, there are also, there's a, there are two dental offices in the area. We don't know how widespread this is, but we would like to see, and after they left the Hampton House and it continued, we've contacted DEHEC, so we're waiting so that we can get some sort of testing on these waters to see if it has had any type of possible long-term effects on people who've been living in our area for a long time, children with developmental issues, people who are being diagnosed with diabetes at this time. There is a possibility, and we have contacted, but we want you all to help us so that it won't have to go any further, and we can at least feel that we're, we're living a little safer with our water and sewer, our water. And I do thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Reflecting back, what has been the process, the procedure? How long has this been noticed and reported to us?
We've reported it, over the years, we've been reporting it, and...
A year?
Over the years. And the city would come out and they would remedy the situation, and it would, as, as our, we call it a Band-Aid. They'd flush the water, and it would come back clear, and then a few days to a few weeks later, then this is what we would get.
I was just wondering, the same thing happens in, in my neighborhood, and I tend to call as well.
Yes.
And so, Joey, I was going to ask, I know it's part, I know my neighborhood's part of the CIP, it's upgrading the lines, is that the same issue here, or what exactly is going on in, in this neighborhood? And then, if, if that is it, when is it going to be, when is it in the CIP?
Well, I, I, I can't say exactly when this particular neighborhood's going to be in the CIP, but I will offer to come back with a presentation with that.
Specifically, specifically to this?
Specifically for this neighborhood. I mean, the, with the Flint, Michigan issue right now, I mean, obviously, any discolored water is a concern. What, what we're seeing is, is a deposit, it's iron deposits in the water, is what we see from our galvanized piping, and this is not unique to this particular neighborhood. I mean, as you, as you well know, it's in your neighborhood as well, and it's in other...
I bathe my babies in brown water sometimes. Sometimes I have to bathe my babies in brown water, so I, I, yeah, yeah, so, but, I, it's, so it's really a seri, I mean, it's serious that we've, we've talked about this in other areas, and I know that is what Ms. Williams has, has talked about as far as the filters and the flushing. I know the flushing helps for a little while, but there has to be a more long-term source, or long-term solution.
There is, and the solution is replacement of the galvanized pipe. I mean, what, what we're looking at, what, what this is, is this is old galvanized piping that over time, you have iron deposits. It's, this is, there is a difference between iron and lead, so let's make sure that we're, what we're seeing here is iron, it's, it's not the lead. Lead is from old lead piping or old plumbing that has lead soldered joints, and if, if council would like, we can prepare a presentation.
It'd be helpful, and also maybe a, a representation of, of where the, because we get, we get regularly emails, usually from Howard Rose Hill on, on the same issue, or and or Wells Garden, obviously, Earlwood, as Tamika mentioned, and now Booker Washington Heights. It'd be interesting to see exactly, also in our schedule, CIP, if and how we're dealing with these issues.
Sure. We do, we do budget every year for replacement of galvanized piping, but it, it takes time, and it's not a cheap endeavor, so it's, it does, it does cost money to do this. So, we can, we can make a presentation to that effect. But I did, I did want to say that, you know, this, this is a result of the galvanized piping. The city of Columbia, as well as many other utilities, participate or, or treat their water for, for the lead and copper issue that we're seeing on the news today, and what I'd like to do is include in the presentation how we prepare and how we treat for that, and how we're not in the same issue as...
It'd be very helpful.
Joey, we all...
Mr. McDowell and Ms. Davis?
Joey, what about the demographics? How far and how wide? Dr. Graham, of course, your church, that community behind your church, is that the same problem?
Same problem within the whole community and across the Beltline with Randolph Street.
Over, across Beltline, what about across Pharaoh, that area? Is that a factor? You haven't heard that. Where's Bible Way?
It's, it's behind, it's behind the church, it's behind the church, going towards utilities.
So, included in the, in the study, will be some demographics in terms of how far, how wide?
Yes, sir, and, and what we'll see is, it's the older communities, the older communities are the communities that have, because in the '60s, galvanized piping was a very popular material, so that's where we'll see the majority of these, these complaints. But if we were to look at our service orders across the system, you would see discolored water is a common complaint in, in our water system, but in, in most water systems. And it, it, it will be, you'll see a high density of it in the older areas, but you, you would also see it in other areas as well. But I did want to point out, and what we quickly prepared was a slide that shows some links to our website. We do, we, every year, we print a consumer confidence report that has all the parameters we test for across our system, and the first link there takes you to that report, and it, it has the, the parameters we treat for, we treat, we test hundreds of locations across our system every month, and we, we are, you know, we, we present that to DEHEC every year, but also, we present it to our customers and, and our customers. And um, we, we are, you know, we, we present that to DHEC every year, but also we present it to our customers in the, um, in our confidence, customer confidence report. So, I did wanna point that out, that is on our website. So any information, especially with the lead issue right now, um, that parameter is one of our parameters and we're, we, we've never been over that, um, over the.
Sure.
The limit.
Yes, ma'am, uh, I'm sorry, but, yeah, Regina.
May we please have a copy of the report for the Booker Washington Heights neighborhood? Um, sir, may we please have a copy of that report? Because as we said, we've contacted some people and, well, DHEC and we, we would just like to feel confident that, you know, we don't know.
Sure, we, we, yes, we can, whatever we have is obviously public, we'll make sure.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Davis and Ms. Devine?
Um, just, just uh, I guess a question or, or some sort of guidance. We're, we're saying that, Joey, are you indicating that the uh, whatever the source is, it's the result? Or it's a um, one of the characteristics of the uh, galvanized pipes? Are those our pipes or what?
Uh, where you see lead uh, in the system is typically in service lines and old plumbing. Um, the, the galvanized piping, you, you see that in our system, but also you see that in old plumbing as well.
That's, that was why I asked. So if we, when we look at this and as a result of uh, an analysis and the, the, the strategy to, to eliminate it. On, on uh, within the city infrastructure, we would probably still have some, some challenges throughout whatever area if, if it's, you know, whether it's confined or expanded. Because the, the residential parts have, would still have galvanized pipes, which we're not responsible for.
Yes.
We've gotta, that's gotta be a part of the education process, I would assume.
And we offer testing too. If customers would like to have their water tested, um, you can pick up bottles from our office and uh, we'll, we'll test for free. As part of, part of our service.
And I know we're gonna do it, but that, I just thought we'd put it out there because it's, it could be on both sides. If we could, you can eliminate it here, infrastructure, but then when you get to the residential and private properties, you would still have the galvanized piping.
We, and we can, when we prepare a presentation, we can, we can um, exhibit how, how the lead enters the, the water and.
How soon?
Uh, come back in two weeks?
Iron.
Well, what I'd like to do is prepare um, a quick presentation on the, the whole Flint, Michigan issue. And, and what they're facing and, and why we're not in that issue.
That's true.
We're not, uh, we don't have that concern right now. The galvanized piping, I mean, we, we can do a quick exhibit of where the issues are in our system and uh, we can present that as well.
Okay, awesome.
And then the schedule for the, and I understand the CIP changes, but we evaluate that. But the, the scheduling for the, those areas that you're gonna pinpoint?
Yes, ma'am, we can, we'll bring it back and I mean, we may not be able to say exactly when we'll hit each area because there's, it's.
Right.
It's gonna be a number of areas.
Yeah, but I, I think it's important, just kinda like I said, you know, like Earlwood, I just can say that from personal experience. We've had it for years and we knew it would be, I think, when we, we first started talking about it a lot, it was four years in the plan. And although people didn't like it, we understood that there was, you know, this fifteen, sixteen year would be when it started being addressed. And so I think that it's only fair that we have an opportunity to say, okay, these are the four or five areas that have this issue. They, this is how much it's gonna cost, this is when we expect them being a CIP. And then we can also look at prioritizing and seeing if any of those could be moved back up.
All right, Ms. Davis, I think uh, may have the last word and we're gonna put the bell on this.
Just, just a question, uh, maybe a precautionary question. Um, I'm hearing, for example, with, from Ms. Devine, that there, that's a known area that, that may be similar uh, problems. Do we know, I guess we do by design, where the galvanized piping is throughout the city? By area or streets or that sort of thing?
We, we have an idea. I don't know that I could locate every galvanized pipe in the system, but we, we do know where we have the complaints and we know where communities at the right age in construction.
Uh, so as a precaution, are we, could we, we know where they are. Are we going to do anything to maybe do some, some, some sort of testing or analysis? Just wherever they are right now and uh, beyond the, the specific areas that are being reported to us?
We do, we do testing regularly now, um, that would detect any issues that would be caused by the piping.
Okay, okay.
And we can present how we do that and where all we do that as well.
And Joey had a moment before the meeting to dialogue with Pastor Graham and our neighborhood leaders. Can we make sure you keep that, that conversation going strong and, and, and keep us posted? We'll look forward to your, uh, to your report um, in, in short order as well.
Yes, sir.
Very small micro issue, these tablets that you guys have, um, that help folks with their water.
We do, uh, we have, yes, sir, with laundry issues, yes, sir, we have tablets that we offer.
Let's make sure we also talk about that and re, and liberally, cause Regina, I wish I could say that this was, and Mr. Watson, a, 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 just a Booker Washington Heights issue. But, but it pops up periodically and it comes up in spurts. And you, you'll see emails and, and um, occasionally, um, I'll see a reference to some magic tablet that does help at least with the wash.
Yes, sir.
Pastor, I don't know if it helps with the baptismal pool. But, but, but it does help with your whites. Can we make sure that we, we share those liberally? Uh, okay, thank you.
Just one last request. Our, our community meeting is six o'clock this coming Thursday. Is it possible that we could get some of these bottles that Mr. Jako was just speaking of? If I need to come and pick them up, I just want to have them available for our community.
Some bottles and some tablets and, and.
And that's for Thursday, so I can give you my information. I'll come pick them up if, if you all can't get to us. Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ma'am, did you have a question to our statement?
I did, I was at the water room in my office this morning, dropping off the water before I was feeling that the machine is broken and it's been going in the blood.
First time you heard that, okay, address that. Next time you gotta come to the microphone too, hold on a story. All right, let's keep it um, going. Thank y'all so much.
Mr. Mayor, could you open a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
For resolution number R two thousand fifteen one oh six, designating the two hundred and three hundred and four hundred blocks of Wacama Avenue in the Wales Garden neighborhood as a residential parking permit district.
Sure, um, is there anyone here to speak in favor of or against this issue? Seeing none, is there a motion? Move in second, any discussion? Move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. McDowell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Devall?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin? Ordinance number.
And I, I do know this too, um, I know this is something Mr. McDowell was interested in as well. Have we spent some more time with, with, with Mr. Carter and others? I know there've been some, there's been some interest, not only on, on speed mitigation, but also uh, and some parking issues. As, as to deal with the issues in the King Park neighborhood that he's expressed to us. Is, are we also pursuing this as a possibility and, and no, in, in MLK neighborhood?
I'll have to ask the staff what the status is. I know at one point, we were waiting on enough signatures, this was my memory, but.
I know some Reverend McDowell was interested in it, I didn't want the opportunity to pass.
Okay, yeah, I'll need to talk to John. I know that we have been pursuing that. I, I don't know what the status of it is, but we'll bring that information back. And we have been working with that neighborhood. There's some challenges um, in reference to where they want some of the traffic control measures put into place. With regards to their proximity to the intersections.
Thank you.
Ordinance number.
Close the public hearing?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, ordinance number two thousand sixteen zero zero seven. An ordinance granting consent to application for franchise for cable service and setting the franchise fee.
Motion?
So move.
So in second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Devall?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Resolution number R two thousand sixteen zero one one, permitting the fire department to collect money for the muscular dystrophy association.
So move. Um, Ms. Ms. Duval?
I know this is something that's been done all the time, but I've dealt with this requirement that municipal governments give permission to solicit on the public right of ways for different events. And I've always advised against them because it is a dangerous thing on so many different levels. So Chief, I'm gonna vote against this. You can probably get the permission to do it, but it's still dangerous.
Not against the boot, Howard, not against the boot. All I say is that if you get the authority again, Chief, you better win this year, okay? Move the previous question. Uh, did we have a motion? I apologize, Nikki. We did, it, it, we were in the ready, it's okay, move the previous question.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Devall?
No.
Ms. Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we're moving into a period of appointments. Ms. Luc Bailey will come forward to assist.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. The first one on the agenda is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And I'm looking for appointments for Mr. Devall, Mr. Davis and Mayor Benjamin.
Uh, I would like to appoint Mr. John Green.
Second, any discussion? Move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Devall?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Did you have an appointee in mind, Mr. Davis?
You have, what's her name?
Bethany Bell, Bethany Bell?
Bell, yeah. So move.
Move the appointment of Bethany Bell, so in second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Devall?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Connie, I do have a question regarding BPAC.
Sure.
With Ms. Britt, um, no longer there, um, have they selected a chair or who is running BPAC at this point?
It's um.
They do have a chair in place, it's Keith Goslin.
Yeah, Keith Goslin, yeah.
But we do need to see about reappointing him.
I thought we disappointed him, didn't we? Okay.
Is it currently to reappoint him now?
Yes, please, yes.
So, so move.
Second.
All right, all right, yes, it'd be, um, service, my appointment. I thought we'd done that earlier, I apologize. We've been meeting and everything, so it's. Move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Devall?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm looking for a new appointee and the reappointment to Reggie McKnight.
Repeat that.
Two, two appointees, one, one eligible for reappointment?
Yes.
There's, there's still one there that uh, we need to hold up.
Reverend McDowell has.
Yes, sir.
I thought I had listed it, Regina Williams.
Regina Williams?
A second.
Regina?
Yes.
All right, move in second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move Ms. Williams' appointment. Move the previous question, please.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Devall?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Okay, and next on the agenda, we have.
Connie, what is that?
That's the cog.
I'm glad you asked.
No, 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 these, these are one of the development corporations that, I guess, came, came in existence thirty, forty years ago. This, this is one of them, hmm?
Yes.
This is the one that Ellen Cooper serves as a, as a, as our appointee to. But, but, but this, but this.
Cog.
No, this is, this is, this is development corporation along with um, uh, there are a handful of them across the state. I'm trying to think of uh, the, the other um, ones.
Like the downtown one, I mean, like the one was with the, before the Vista came? So I guess what do they do?
Is the letter, it, was the letter not in their packet that the cog sent?
It was attached, yeah. What, they started it.
They referred to it as the cog.
I'm sorry?
Thought they referred to it as the cog.
It is a, the cog administers it, yes, sir.
It's like under their.
I think, yes, sir, Ms. Cooper is the appointee.
Did we finish with the Board of Zoning Appeals? I, I didn't get Mr. McKnight, did we get him reappointed?
We appointed Ms. Williams in her, in her absence and, and the um, yeah, you left the room at the wrong time. And uh, and uh, Mr. Davis is holding an appointment on, on, on the other vacancy.
Holding it?
Yeah, yes, sir. Um, is there a motion to, to reappoint Ellen Cooper to her, I guess it'd be her second?
Yeah, it'll be a second term.
So move, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second to Ms. Cooper's uh, reappointment? Yeah, it's, it's been seconded. Uh, move the previous question, Clark Colerole?
Mr. McDowell?
I wanna voice.
Yes, sir.
We had a.
I'm sorry, I was asking him a question, so.
And I didn't hear it all.
It was a mo, it was a motion to reappoint Ellen Cooper to her position on the CMDC. And send us some additional information of, of, about, about the development corporation.
Okay, I have their bylaws, so I'll, I'll forward those to you.
That'd be helpful, thank you. Yeah, re, reappointment to her second and last term.
And we're on the Midlands Development Corporation?
Yes, sir, twenty-four.
Yes, okay. Mr. Devall?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Okay, next one on the agenda is the Midlands Regional Transit Authority. We're looking for an appointee to replace Mr. Newman.
I wanna speak first on that, if y'all don't, don't mind. And I, I've shared with all of our colleagues and some constituents, um, the concerns I've had about uh, the Comet board being representative of, of the community and also representative of riders. The, uh, I know that the county council chairman has made a, an appointment. We decided to go in a, in a different direction into appoint constituents as opposed to um, having a council person serve in that, in that uh, body. The most recent data from the Comet clearly states that the ridership, while changing, um, is, is overwhelmingly minority African-American. Um, is majority female, uh, and average age over, over fifty. And I, I just think it's important that, that we recognize that and also appoint someone who has utilized the system uh, regularly. Carolyn Gleaton, while we have significantly qualified uh, applicants and, and some of them here today, has ridden uh, this bus system consistently as a, as a rider of choice for forty years. And a retired state employee, still working, and I think would add some incredible perspective to that board and as such, I move her nomination.
What's her name?
Carolyn Gleaton.
I'll second that.
Yes, sir. Second by Ms. Devine, discussion is to, Mr. Duval?
Yeah, I, I'd like to nominate Ms. Walter Wildman to the post.
Yes, sir.
Um, she is also a handicap, she is also, has ridden the bus. Uh, she is uh, an expert in, in finance and would be able to give a good oversight to the thirteen million dollars that the Comet is getting in. Uh, I think she would be able to provide a quality bus system and quality oversight.
Thank you, Ms. Duval. Um, is a second? The um, and we, and we certainly can go by, by, by ballot as, as we have previously. All right, yeah, please, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say something. I've, I've had a couple of conversations this week regarding the CMRTA. And I will tell you, we've got a lot of, especially with the condensed timeframe, we've got a lot of really, really good applicants, which I think is encouraging. It shows that, you know, the passion and, and the commitment of this entire community, no matter where you live, no matter if you've been a consistent rider or not, to, to really uh, be a part of the system. Um, I will say that I've, I've uh, had, reached about three, three of the applicants have reached out to me and all three are very, very qualified. Um, but I do, I wanna echo the mayor's comments on Ms. Gleaton, um, to a certain extent of the, the consistent ridership over the last several years. Um, but also just understanding, I think, the needs of where the system needs to be. Um, and, and so for that reason, I am supporting her nomination. But I am encouraged by the number of applicants we have and I hope that, you know, we, there might be some other opportunities for these people to, to really be a part of the growth of the system.
Well, it's important to note too, we will have another appointment later this year.
Later, yeah.
Later this year, so I know, I see Derek's here as well. Um, we will have another vacancy, uh, cause Mr. Huggins, um, serves his second and final term. He's, yeah, yeah, he's, he's, he rotates off, I believe in um.
November.
Uh, November.
November.
Yeah, this year.
And, and we have.
Yes, sir.
Three points, three.
I move to select either one of the candidates before.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me say this.
Ms. Please.
Um, I think everybody has a special interest in this right now, which, which is good. Um, and working with people with disabilities for quite some time, um, I, I understand the need to make sure that recipients of services, uh, serve in a leadership capacity because they, their input is, to me, I think is critical and also unique, get it from a different perspective. But, um, I, I think moving forward, too, we need to, it's, it would be good that we, uh, continue to look at more consumers of, of this, this is definitely a public, uh, public entity that, that serves a vast number of people from different backgrounds. And through this process, I think we're moving in that direction to make sure that, you know, we, we have people that can look at the system, the process, and give us feedback from a consumer perspective, that people who ride the bus take advantage of the service, you know? So we need, I'm strongly suggesting that we keep that in mind moving forward with other nominations.
What was that?
He was just saying, can, could keep, uh, consumers, uh.
He needs to speak into the mic, because I couldn't hear him either.
It's the same thing, yeah. Well, um, I won't blame it on the curvature that we.
No, you're gonna speak into the mic.
But I'm just saying that I, I strongly suggest that we, and the, moving forward, keep in mind the, the advantage of having people who are truly consumers of this particular service, um, as we, uh, continue to make selections and recommendations.
All right, good deal. So we, um, have nominations of Ms. Gleaton and, and Ms. Wildman. And I'm not even sure if we even need seconds, uh, for nominations. I'm not sure if that's, if, I'm not even sure if we need seconds for nominations. I don't, I don't know if we do or don't, um, procedurally, uh, deferred to the parliamentarians. We can, uh, do it by, by poll and, um, uh, just call the council people and they can vote accordingly. Is that fair, Teresa? Is that the way you do it? Okay. Um, nominations being Carolyn Gleaton and Waldo Wildman.
Wildman.
Mr. The, Mr. McDowell.
Gleaton.
Mr. DeVal.
Wildman.
Ms. Devine.
Gleaton.
Mr. Davis.
Gleaton.
Mayor Benjamin.
Gleaton. All right.
I know Ms. Wildman is here, and I do want to thank her for, for applying, and, and she has ridden the bus and, and, um, is very passionate. She and I have exchanged some, some communication. She's very passionate, and I hope we can figure out a way to get her involved somehow.
The same for Mr. Roddy, definitely.
I see it.
And I'll be reaching out to them, too, probably in September, October, with Mr. Huggins, since he'll be rotating.
And then Mr. Anderson, how long has he served?
He will rotate off next year, November of two thousand seventeen.
We did staggered terms, so this, this, um, um, appointment serves for the next three years.
Yes, he'll serve until November two thousand eighteen.
Is Ron in his second term, too?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Yes, yeah. All right.
Okay. Last but not least, the Planning Commission. I am seeking an appointee to replace someone who has resigned.
Let me. Who are we appointing?
No.
Who, 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 who'd we lose?
Um. Can't remember her name offhand.
One.
There's one of the women on there, and I'm sorry.
Sorry?
I can't remember her name. Do you remember? Kendora Foster.
The person, um.
Thank you, Krista.
Um, and I've, I've actually, were, uh, that was, well, let me finish. I was gonna say Reverend McDowell, Kendora Foster was someone that I had appointed, and she's now moved out of the district. She was in District Two, so I think to try and keep some of the balance, it would be great to have someone in that area. But I don't, I don't know if you have someone in mind?
Ernest Cromartie was essentially the person, of course, that I was looking to nominate, but of course, his address changed and of course moved into another district.
Yeah, he's moved into District One.
But he's in District One.
Mm-hmm. He lives in Cotton Town.
What's? Still good. What's the demographics? What's the demographics of it? I mean, who's in what, how many in each district?
You have one person from District One, um, one person from District, or two people from District Two, and three from District Three, one from Four, and one that's outside of the city limits.
He's really good. He's really good.
You say there's two from District Two?
Correct, mm-hmm. So you're missing, District Four only has one, and District One only has one.
I, I would move the nomination of Ernest Cromartie.
Second.
Any other nominations? Um, move the previous question, Clark Colerole.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. DeVal.
Cromartie.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis.
I ought to hold my vote. I, I was, I was hoping we could kind of hold.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin, okay.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any, uh, refer, reports or referrals to committee? Is there a, a non-debatable immediate motion to adjourn?
So move, man.
Is there a second? Move the previous question, Clark Colerole.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. DeVal.
Aye.
Ms. Devine.
Aye.
Ms. Devine. Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.